All right. Um, Councilor Hill, would you read us out of closed session, please?
Yeah. I move this council certified by a recorded vote to the best of each council member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convened the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session.
Second.
Ms. Thomas? Can't hear you.
I have trouble hearing you.
Yeah. You want me to do it? Okay. Um, Counselor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
And yes for me. Right? Next, I'll call the regular meeting to order. We'll have a brief moment of silence. Thank you. And we can't hear you now. All right, would you do roll call, please?
Mayor Walker.
I'm present.
Vice Mayor McGill?
I am here.
Counselor Hill?
Here.
Counselor Payne?
Here.
Counselor Snook?
Here.
All right. Next, is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
I moved out for the agenda as presented.
Second.
Ms. Thomas?
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill? Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snook?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Counselors, are there any announcements?
Yes, Mayor Walker, I have an announcement. Let me pull this up. The city of Charlottesville is currently accepting applications for boards and commissions. Applications are being accepted through June 11th for city council consideration at its June 21st meeting. For information on individual boards and to apply, visit www-charlottesville.gov. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? No, all right. Um, next, we have recognitions and proclamations. We have one proclamation for Fair Housing Month. Whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted in on April 11th, 1968, enshrined into federal law, the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States, and whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. And whereas the city of Charlottesville is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all, and whereas our social fabric and the economy, health, the environment are strengthened in diverse inclusive community, and whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists and many communities remain segregated, and whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunities are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Nakia Walker, on behalf of the council of the city of Charlottesville, do hereby declare the month of April 2021 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Charlottesville as an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for the equal housing opportunity for all residents and prospective residents of the city of Charlottesville. Signed and sealed this 19th day of April 2021. There's no one accepting that tonight. All right, thank you. Next up, we have the consenting agenda. Ms. Thomas, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Number one, minutes, February one, I'm sorry. Bear with me just a moment. Number one, minutes, March one, regular meeting, March 4th, budget work session, March 11th, joint budget work session with city schools. Two, ordinance, city of Charlottesville COVID ordinance repeal, second reading. Three, ordinance, designation of trees for protection under the tree conservation ordinance, second reading. Four, appropriation, reprogramming FY 2020, 2021, community development block grant funds and minor action plan amendment, one reading. Part A, resolution, amendment to community development block grant account, reprogramming of funds for FY 2020, 2021, $64,097.82. Part B, resolution, FY 2020, 2021, minor action plan amendment of the 2018, 2022 consolidation plan. Number five, appropriation, Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, DCJS, coronavirus emergency supplement funding, CESF, fiscal year 2021, $50,000, first of two readings. Six, appropriation, firehouse subs, public safety grant, $26,971.10, first of two readings. Seven, resolution, donation of the 1967 City Hall signed to the Albemarle Charlottesville Historic Society, one reading. Number eight, report, Ravenna Authorities Quarterly Report.
Okay, thank you. Counselors, are there any questions or comments at this time? All right, Mr. Wheeler, would you check to, oh, if there's, is there a motion?
Um, we have the motion right now.
It has it on here.
I move.
A comment before the motion, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. If you're in the audience on the webinar and you'd like to comment on one of those items on the consent agenda, click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine. Each person will have up to three minutes to address counsel. There will be other opportunities tonight for public comment under community matters and at the end of the meeting under matters by the public. Mayor Walker, there are no hands raised.
Okay. All right, thank you. And for me, you know, to, if we could take out and vote on two separately. And I think everything else should be.
All right, I move that we adopt the consent agenda, minus item number two, which is the ordinance for the city of Charlottesville COVID ordinance repeal.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Thomas?
Mayor Walker?
Um, yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snook?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then there are motion for the second item.
I move that we adopt consent agenda, item two, the ordinance for the city of Charlottesville's coordinate COVID ordinance repeal.
Second.
Ms. Thomas?
Mayor Walker?
No.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snook?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up. We're doing good. We have the city manager's response to community matters.
Thank you, Mayor Walker and council, just a few responses from questions, both at previous meetings and that have come in from several of our constituents. Special events, we've had quite a number with the changes of our COVID ordinances. And while we are still in a state of emergency, our special event applications have been halted, but staff are currently working on a way to identify safe uses of our public areas so that we may begin to consider special event applications again and do so in some type of a phased approach so that we can allow the simpler of activities to occur, but still being very cautious with the larger events. And so staff continues to work with that and will present that to you as that progresses. We're very, very happy, an item discussed at an earlier city council meeting, the Parks and Rec Department worked very closely with both the citizen community and business community, and this past weekend completed a repairs to steps at Riverview Park, providing access to the Ravanna River. Was a very successful program that came together very quickly and hopefully met the community needs. Also, because we have been receiving a number of questions, again, back to the COVID ordinance, just a reminder that per state mandate, though we are beginning to open up some of our park facilities, the splash pads remain closed as a state requirement. With that, Mayor, that's all that I have to report.
Can I just have a quick clar- so the special events are, we aligning those with what we're with Parks and Recs or if someone's activity is similar to something we're opening back up, are we allowing that? Or are we still waiting and for a certain time in the future for special events?
It's probably more a special time in the future. Right now, the state of emergency is that we're not accepting any special event applications. So if it requires a special event permit, we're not accepting, but because some of those activities do align, we're beginning to look at that to try to figure out a way that that would be able to occur.
Okay. Any other questions? No, all right. So next up, we have community matters. Looks like we have six speakers that have registered in advance. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Wheeler to take care of those six and the other 10 spots.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. I see five of the six have already joined us, so I'll keep an eye out on the other person. And if you want to get in line, you can click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine. If you're watching us on Fox, I wanted to say Foxcast, I meant Facebook and Boxcast. And if you're watching there, you need to come to the webinar and register, and then you can participate and speak to counsel. Each person will get three minutes. We'd appreciate if you said your full name and place of address. And first up tonight is Emily Little, who I saw earlier. And now I don't see. Oh, there she is. Emily, you're on with counsel, you've got three minutes.
Excellent, thank you. Good evening, counselors, Mayor Walker. Just wanted to bring this list to your attention. The splendid poison frog, the jalpa falsebroke salamander, the lost shark, the smooth handfish, the lake lanau freshwater fish, the chiriquai harlequin frog, the spine dwarf mantis, the bonin pipistrelle bat, the lord how longyeard bat, the wolsey cone bush, the agave larita, the afonze hotensis, the hawaiian yellowwid, the golden fuchsia, and the spixes macaw. Those are the species that we have lost thus far during the time of the coronavirus pandemic. And as of today, we've lost 567,000 Americans to coronavirus. And the ones most likely to die from coronavirus here in our country are indigenous Americans, black Americans, and Pacific Islander Americans. Loss of human life and of biodiversity on the planet are deeply disturbing and not unconnected. These two losses are not in isolation, and they're not a one and done experience, they're a preview of what is to come. We are entering a new era of pandemics that go hand in hand with the climate crisis. Climate change is shaking up our natural world and changing disease algorithms on the planet, to name a few, mosquito and tick-borne illnesses are worsening. The pathogens being released by thawing permafrost in the Arctic are reemerging from history. And of course, what caused coronavirus to emerge, a new pathogen from an animal. Animals are in a dire situation, adapt or die, and that is causing migration, and so their contacts are new and are putting us in as vulnerable as a place to them. And of course, BIPOC communities and low-income communities are the most vulnerable amongst us. The reality is, is that what, we have seen what happens when a new virus emerges. I don't have to tell you how awful it is. But is there any chance to prevent disease emergence? What scientists are saying is, we need to consider how we do business with the biosphere. We may not be the particular place where coronavirus emerged from this time, but it is our habits and our addiction to fossil fuels that is turning the world into a place where new diseases will more easily emerge. It feels like right now there are a million coronavirus fires that need to be put out, but we have to continue on in being part of the prevention for the billion more fires from disease, from climate change, habitat destruction, and biodiversity loss. I want to thank you and the new city manager for taking the local call to action seriously, for funding a staff position dedicated to climate action planning. We need to keep our local end of the bargain in changing the course of the climate crisis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up will be Marsha Guyer, followed by Lisa Glasgow. Marsha, you're on with city council, you've got three minutes. And you'll need to unmute. I'm going to try to unmute you now. Marsha, can you hear us?
Thank you. Now, yes, and I bet you can hear me now.
We can, go ahead.
Sorry, I got a little lost there. Um, so I'm Marsha Guyer, I live at 1008 Pear Tree Lane in Charlottesville. Good evening, city councilors, Mayor Walker, and city manager Boils. Thank you, Mr. Boils and counselors, for putting a new dedicated climate action position into next year's Charlottesville budget. It is so needed. In honor of Earth Day, this Thursday, I'm going to speak about a service for income-qualified households to both minimize electric and gas bills and reduce their home's contribution to climate change. It's LEAP's home weatherization program. What a great program for the city and county to be backing. And have been backing for years. Income eligibility for 100% free home weatherization services has become very, very generous this year. Income of up to $150,200 qualifies. If any household member is age 60 or older, up to $75,100 for younger households. Renters are equally eligible with their landlord's permission. Mobile homes, residents are newly eligible, this is something that just started. To get started, call LEAP. Sorry. Call LEAP at 434-227-4666. This year, LEAP has more subsidized money than ever, and they're actively seeking more climates, clients for the home weatherization program. Police, LEAP staff can go into homes now with their masks on, so there won't be a long delay. I'm speaking as a former weatherization client. The insulation and other improvements cut my electric and gas bills by more than a third, and my conscience is satisfied that I'm doing one person's worth to keep Earth's climate catastrophe from getting worse. If your home has an uninsulated or underinsulated attic, LEAP will arrange for it to be very well insulated. In my case, they added a whole foot of insulation to the measly two inches my attic already had. Attic insulation gives the biggest benefit of LEAP's standard weatherization services. LEAP's team will also air seal accessible spaces in the attic and crawl space or unfinished basement, and make a number of other improvements that I haven't got time to mention in three minutes. Other possible improvements, which are decided based on how bad your home's energy situation is, include replacements of very inefficient heating and air conditioning systems or refrigerators, and adding insulation to walls and floor joists. Wow, more big expensive improvements.
Thank you.
Needed. Happy Earth Week.
Happy Earth Week.
Mayor Walker, next up is Lisa Glasgow, who will be followed by Evan Brown, but I don't see Evan in the webinar right now. Lisa, you're on with city council, you've got three minutes.
Good evening. You can hear me?
We can.
Okay. My name is Lisa Glasgow, and I live on Lake Forest Drive. And tonight, I want to talk about trees, specifically urban tree cover in Charlottesville. As you may already know, trees provide many benefits to individuals and communities. First, of course, they reduce air pollution by absorbing carbon, the primary cause of climate change, and expressing oxygen. Trees also absorb or intercept other particulates that are bad for us to breathe, such as those produced by smog. Tree roots reduce soil erosion by holding the dirt in place when it rains, which then helps clean the water as it slowly percolates down. And that slowing of the water means the area needs less storm drainage, like pipes, gravel, cisterns, processing facilities, et cetera. Trees also reduce noise pollution by blocking and deadening it, making a place more comfortable to live in. This attracts birds and animals, creating biodiversity. Humans are some of the animals who are attracted to trees. They improve quality of life in a variety of ways. Recent research has proven how being in a natural setting improves mental health. Trees offer shade in the summer and a windbreak in winter, very nice, and make for reduced energy costs in homes. In the same manner, trees reduce the heat island effect in a city, including glare. According to the U.S. Forest Service, the beauty and cool peacefulness of trees encourages economic and community stability. People want to stay where they are comfortable. They go outside to walk and talk to neighbors. They stay longer in shops and restaurants, and they buy more. That brings in tax revenue, and who's going to argue with that? So during this Earth Week, I hope you will consider the Tree Canopy of Charlottesville. We were designated a tree city by the Arbor Day Foundation in 2007. Let's continue to grow a hardy urban forest that will release the fresh air of natural renewal for everyone in the city. Thank you very much, and have a good Earth Week.
Thank you.
Our next speaker should be Evan Brown, but again, I don't see that person in the webinar. Next will be Elizabeth Stark and Bill Emery. Again, you can get in line by clicking the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're watching on Facebook or Boxcast, go to charlottesville.gov/zoom to register for the webinar and join us. Next up is Elizabeth Stark, you're on with council, you've got three minutes.
Okay, thank you so much. Hi, Mayor Walker and counselors, thank you for having me. My name's Elizabeth Stark, I live on Fairway Avenue in the city. I appreciate, I wrote to you all earlier this week about the lifting of the COVID ordinance in the city and how that would affect special events permits. So I do thank Mr. Boils for giving us additional information on that with the consent agenda. But I did just want to make sure and clarify as the city goes and does this work where they start looking at events permits, that, you know, protests and demonstrations are something that is prioritized for the community, as long as those are within the state COVID limits of attendance and size and things like that. Our free speech is very important, and, you know, with outside of newsworthy events and fines, we haven't been able to exercise it for the past year. So I just really wanted to say, I hope that will be a priority for you all as you look at how these regulations are lifted in the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bill Emery. Bill, you're on with council, you've got three minutes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wheeler. My name's Bill Emery, and I live at 1604 East Market Street in the city. A month ago, during Matters from the Public, I mentioned the community's desire to fix the stairway at Riverview Park for safe access to the river. Now, city manager somewhat covered this earlier, but since that March council meeting, the engineering staff had provided technical expertise, departments of parks and recreation delivered repair materials, and 25 Ravanna River enthusiasts volunteered 200 hours of labor. The individual contributions of time ranged from less than an hour, that was me, to the champion of the project, Gabe, who worked close to 60 hours. You know, having multiple access points to the Ravanna River benefits people who live in our community. It is important that the river be accessible to people. Ravanna is our hometown river and a regional treasure. So I just want to thank council, city manager, and the city departments for making this, for making the stairway repair happen. I really deeply appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill. That's our fifth speaker, we have room for 11 more. Right now, we have two hands raised, Tanisha Hudson and Robin Hoffman. Tanisha, you're on with council, you've got three minutes.
Good evening, I have a few things that I would like to cover. One is with everything being lifted a little bit within the state, you all really need to sit down and talk about opening up council chambers. This is the only city council in the research that I've done, other than Stanton, who's actually trying to take away people's rights to even bring up community matters, that you guys have to open up council. It's a way that you can do it and maintain social distancing, number one. Number two, special event permits. You know that there's a major trial happening right now in America with the George Floyd murder trial that's happening, and as soon as that verdict is released, you know there's going to be protests. So you may as well get ready, because people are going to protest with or without an event, a special event permit, because that's their free speech to do so, and they're able to do that. And there's been other protests. And there's been other protests happening since we've been in a pandemic that's been allowed from a state level. So you better get prepared for that. You better get ready for it. Number two, I mean, number three, the skate park. Do not try to shut down other events that happen in local parks when you have people at their skate park that are not wearing masks. They're not following social distancing rules. There's a lot that's not being followed over there. And I don't hear nobody complaining about that because they're your kids, and it's not kids that look like me. Another thing that I want to bring up is security at CRHA properties. But maybe I should bring this up at the Housing Advisory Committee. They're about to now have a contract with a security agency because that security agency is running out, I believe, the end of the month. So what are we doing for safety in these neighborhoods? Would they get warm outside? Our residents calling me all the time, advising me of what's happening. I don't know if the mayor is aware of it, but the contract is done at the end of the month with the current agency that's doing security over there. So something needs to be done. I have one more thing to cover. But I'll wait till later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next hand is Robin Hoffman. Robin, you're on with city council. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I just wanted to say happy Earth Day. If you want to plant some trees, by the way, you can get free trees from the Department of Agriculture. Just get on their website and order them. And they're little trees, but like one year, some of the events they had outside, Sierra Club and whatnot, giving out trees that they got from the Department of Agriculture. And I took ten of them, and I went around my neighborhood, and I gave everybody a tree. The other thing is I saw Gabe Silver building that landing. I want to say that the Ravanna River Company is awesome. They actually have a bus that I painted, and each image I did in a canoe. So you can do things there at the river and be outside and jog or whatever, bicycle ride, and enjoy nature, and then please pick up the garbage, you know, for Earth Day. That would be great. Now, Daily Progress had the retreads. The retreads are the senior citizens that have been out during COVID and now vaccinated. They're competing for Down Syndrome and other things. And they're on my TV show. And so I want to again plug CCMC, and thank you very much, David Dillahun, for putting up with my editing and all those terrible things I do to mess up the show. But it looks seamless, and then the Daily Progress picked it up. So I just want to say that that is a venue that we all can do through our phones now. And you can have your own show. It's very cheap, fifty dollars a year. You can be on TV and, you know, really talk about things that are your story and are important to our community. And then I want to say that I'm a nurse. So the female black bioengineer who invented this way of giving protection against COVID has done this three years ago. That this is not a new science, and that this science is going forward, by the way, to treat Parkinson's and MS and sickle cell and things like that. So please pay attention, the side effects. I'm going to say the street side effects that I, when I talk to people, is that they need to drink Gatorade, like a lot of Gatorade before you get your shot and then after. And I think that helps a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin was our seventh speaker. Right now, there are no hands raised. If you'd like to speak to council, click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. Now we have one. Next up is Adrian Dent. Adrian, you're on with council, and you've got three minutes.
Thank you, Brian. Can you all hear me?
We can.
Okay. I just wanted to put in a word for of gratitude to Dr. Andrea Douglas and the Jefferson School African American Heritage Center for their discussion entitled Removing the Mask with Mayor Walker, Nia Bates, Sirad Davenport, Will Jones, and Dr. Lisa Wolfork. And I would like to encourage the community who's listening to, please tune into this conversation. It's vital for the health of our community. If you if you say anything about inclusive community, if that's a word that's left your mouth or something that you you aspire to be part of, then I would encourage everyone to tune into this talk. It's available right now on YouTube on the Jefferson School African American Heritage Center channel as well as a Facebook page. And again, just wanted to encourage listeners that this is a wonderful opportunity for learning and growth. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll give one last call to see if anyone else would like to speak to council. Click the raise hand icon. If you're on via telephone, you can always press star nine. Next up is Don Gathers. Don, you're on with council. You've got three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I hope that everyone is doing well and dealing better with the pollen than I am.
Hi, Don. I may have hit the wrong button there. Are you back?
I think I'm back.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I would say, whereas Wednesday is administrative professionals, they just want to wish all of them well and thank them for all that they do, especially those in the city. I also wanted to make sure that we take a moment to recognize and if it is within your faith, believe, say a prayer for all the communities that are dealing with issues across the country and pray that it never happens here. But I don't ever want us to become so so haughty or complacent that we begin to think that it can't possibly happen here. Because in a blink of an eye, that one thing, that one instance can go wrong. And we've got some other issues to talk about. Also hoping that we can at some point begin the discussion about the statutes. I know that there's something on the agenda later on about that, but I'm not sure exactly what that is or what it means. But I'm hoping that we can at least begin the conversations about those. And let's see, I believe that might be it. I had something else, but I can't remember what it was. If it if it pops back to me, I'll just come back on later. But yeah, thank you all very much. Appreciate appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, there are no other hands raised.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Robertson, would you just remind the community the difference between the special events and the spontaneous? Is it called a spontaneous event?
A spontaneous demonstration.
Yeah.
A demonstration is a reaction to some sort of occurrence that has just happened. So in the nature of some sort of breaking news, it's a spontaneous demonstration is not something that's planned, you know, a week, two weeks, a month in advance. It's something that's really just sort of a natural reaction to something that's just happened. A regular demonstration is similar. It can happen at any time, but our events regulations specify that once a regular demonstration reaches a particular size, the planners of that demonstration could obtain a permit from the city just primarily to allow the city to plan for the safety of the event. And then a special event is an activity like a food festival or a marathon or similar activity that's entertaining or community oriented, but is is not as focused on First Amendment rights as a demonstration would be.
All right, thank you. Councilors, do you have any comments or questions from the comments? I have a couple more, but just wanted.
I just wanted to, again, when I put it in an email today, but thank staff as well as the many volunteers that came out and such. You know, I think just as Mr. Emery said, it's pretty swift order over the last few weeks to just bring that access to the river to fruition. And just really want to echo, I think it's just a great example of the public and the private side coming together, or the community in this case. And so I just want to, again, thank staff and the community members that came out and really showed up. And I ran down there over the weekend, and it's just, it's really a great access point. Thank you.
Thank you all. Any other comments or? And I think all of mine are, I'm just going back to look. So I just wanted to comment on the. So I think we addressed the special events permits that Ms. Hudson was talking about. I made, you know, similar and have had discussions about the skate park and just keeping, you know, just alignment with what we are opening back up and being very mindful of citizen, staff, everyone's safety in that process. The CRHA security, that contract is coming to an end. And there are discussions, there's security. There's a security meeting that happens every other Tuesday with residents that's occurring. Mr. Sales is attempting to explore other options. We met maybe a week or so ago, week and a half maybe, with the police chief to try to figure out what that relationship looked like and how it can be a safe and healthy one during this time. So that's an ongoing discussion. So there are conversations happening around security. Nothing has been quite resolved, and it's not an ideal time. Not that any time over the, you know, past few years has been ideal to not have these things in place. And the weather and anyone who is from here understands what happens when the weather changes, which is unfortunate, but it's something that is on the top of our conversation list and radar, just trying to do it in a really holistic way, which is what the attempt has has been. And the current circumstance, I don't think anyone wanted to be here. There has been a shift in the budget to allocate dollars to maintenance. And I sent Mr. Sales, after having a conversation with a community member today. And there's just not enough money for everything. So just wanted to address that. I am on the CRHA board. But that is probably, if you want more in-depth conversation, either the Safety Committee meeting or the entire board to ask that questions to. But just wanted to answer from my perspective. Yeah, so that's that's all. And the council chambers, and that discussion will happen a little bit later during this meeting. So I don't have any other. Those were all the comments that I had. All right, any? No others? Okay. All right, so seven fifteen, so we'll continue for now. And we have an action item, the First Amendment Monument Lease. It's one reading, and it's a public hearing.
All right, so this is. This item is a proposed lease from the City of Charlottesville to the Bridge PAI. And PAI stands for Progressive Arts Initiative. I'd like to point out that while I worked together with PAI on the agenda materials, we didn't catch until today that the name in your agenda memo was incorrect. Your agenda memo calls the organization the Bridge Progressive Arts Institute. So everywhere you see the word institute, please just substitute the word initiative. Otherwise, the proposed lease is very consistent with the terms of the original 2005 lease to the Thomas Jefferson Center for the Protection of Free Expression. That entity has since wound up its operations and is no longer operational. And so the Bridge PAI is very interested in undertaking responsibility for maintaining the First Amendment Monument, otherwise known as the Community Chalk Board, and for continuing to have that property available within the City of Charlottesville for the general public as well as serve its own mission. So attached is a resolution proposing to approve a lease of the monument slash chalkboard. And the terms of the lease, as discussed with the Bridge PAI, are also attached to your agenda materials. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you. Councilors, any questions? All right. Mr. Wheeler will open the public hearing, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. If you'd like to address council on this topic, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine. And I do not see any hands.
All right, thank you. So we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
And will we adopt the resolution to approve the lease of the First Amendment Monument and related premises to the Bridge Progressive Arts Initiative?
Second.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snook?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That carries five oh. Next up, we have an ordinance, continuity of government ordinance reenactment, one reading.
All right, I will also present this one. In your agenda materials, there is a proposed ordinance to assure continuity of government. This is an updated version of an ordinance you originally enacted in March of 2017, or one of the ordinances. And what I have noted in the materials is that under the state statute that authorizes city council to take actions necessary to assure continuity of government, any ordinance that you enact is effective for not more than a six-month period of time. And so every six months, you've been looking at the ordinances and resolutions that you've passed. And to date, you have each time chosen to extend them for an additional six months. The proposal tonight is for this updated and amended ordinance to continue in effect for another six months. And as noted in the materials, what I have done is I have taken the various ordinances that city council enacted in March of 2020 and amended or extended in September and October of 2020. And I have rolled all of those ordinances into one document so that anyone looking at it can see. can see all of the regulations that will be in place for the next six months and not have to put together a series of multiple documents that started from last March. I've also referenced a couple of key resolutions that were adopted during the the course of the past year. One was the original emergency declaration that remains in effect. And the second was a resolution that granted the Haven permission to operate without regard to zoning special use permit conditions. And that resolution also continues in effect for so long as the emergency remains declared at the local level. And there was a another ordinance that extended certain mandatory review periods that I have also rolled into this ordinance. And so staff's recommendation is that you should enact the continuity of government ordinance as updated for the the next six-month period and continue all of the actions that you currently have in place, including how public meetings are taking place, extension of mandatory deadlines, and the waiver of fees for city-owned areas that are used by businesses as outdoor cafes. With that, I will answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Councilors, any questions?
Yeah, dude, I'm sorry. I'm sure it's like staring right at me, but um, how this lines up with the local state of emergency? Like, when was the last time we did that one? I'm just losing track.
So the declaration of emergency was last March, and you only have to do that once.
Okay.
The declaration of emergency remains in effect until city council takes some sort of affirmative vote to to make a finding that all of the emergency actions that are necessary to address the emergency have been taken. So that can remain in effect until you all determine that the local conditions warrant not being in a declared state of emergency any longer.
I'm not proposing that we're going to do this anytime soon, but if we were to take that action, how would that affect this piece? This ordinance?
Once you are no longer within a declared state of local emergency, you could not continue the actions in this ordinance. So you'd have to go back to business as usual, especially in connection with how you're conducting your meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Right, is there a motion?
I move we adopt the ordinance to assure continuity of government government during the COVID-19 pandemic disaster by acting temporary changes in certain deadlines, modifying public meeting and public hearing practices and procedures, and authorizing other emergency action necessary to assure safe and efficient government operations.
For a second?
A second.
Ms. Thomas?
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snook?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That carries five to zero. Next, we have an appropriation. House Bill 5005, item 408, number 1C, Public Safety and Homeland Security, Department of Criminal Justice Services, Local Police Department funding, $67,913, and it's the first of two readings.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity to be in front of you. During the special session of the General Assembly in conjunction with House Bill 5005, there was funding appropriated to be distributed by the Department of Criminal Justice Services to local police departments statewide. It was based on shares and percentages and headcounts. The purpose was to either attract or retain the police department's sworn personnel that they currently had within their agencies. A $500 allowance was to be provided to each officer. In January of 2021, the city actually received those funds. They had already been encumbered. And the appropriation is to ask for that funding to be distributed. There is currently no budgetary impact on the city as that funding has come from the state. At this point, we are recommending that that appropriation of state funding be approved.
Thank you. Counselors, are there any questions, comments? No, all right. So this is a no vote, so it'll move to the made thorough consent agenda? No, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think this has ever happened.
I was gonna say we're under an hour right now. I'm like, I don't even want to mention it.
Doesn't feel right.
Oh, jinx it.
So the other business, are there any other business items besides what I've brought up earlier?
Last week, we did have some exchanges around if we wanted to modify our agenda moving forward to add an additional section, Mayor Walker, that you had raised. And so I just thought we could just talk about it while we're all here and figure out what we need to do to do that.
Okay. Okay.
If you could just clarify again, the actual scope of that, because part of it was not, was fuzzy in my head.
So we were talking back in January about adding a similar section to the city manager's response to the community matters, to city manager response to counselors, just for questions that'll come up and to have the city manager not have to be expected to answer them that meeting, but to be able to discuss them the next meeting. And so it was just whether we were going to add that section to the agenda or not. Any thoughts, Mr. Boils?
None of that. I would be more than happy to. I think that would be great. Especially for those things that that we that are especially important to the public and the community to be able to discuss during and present during a council meeting. I don't see anything but advantages to it.
Thank you.
It's fine.
Counselors, any? All right.
Sounds like a good idea.
So I guess we would just, we do have to take action because we are modifying our template or our agenda. That's why I wasn't sure. But we'll have to vote on that formal change permanently to our agenda, I believe, based on the last times we've done something like this.
Ms. Thomas, do you need to vote on that today or?
Um, it's part of the council rules and procedures which were adopted last month. So I think we would need an amendment to that.
So do we need to bring something formally to be added to the agenda to vote on next time? Or do we just do it here now?
I I think we could do it here, but Ms. Robertson might be able to add to that.
If you all would like to adopt a motion tonight, then I can work with Ms. Thomas to insert it into your procedures in an appropriate place. And then we'll just update them in accordance with your motion.
Okay.
So I move to add a section for the city manager's response to counselors to the regular council agenda.
Second.
Do we want to specify where in the agenda?
I believe it would coincide.
She just said they, oh, go ahead.
Community matters. Do we want to proceed community matters? Sorry, sorry, could response to community matters or?
I think it could come after, but Ms. Thomas, what are your thoughts? Do you have a?
This is my first time hearing about it, so I'm not sure what the conversations have been around. What different types of questions the city manager would be answering.
So it would just provide counsel an opportunity to ask questions that we would want a response to, and it would give the city manager a chance to respond to our previous items that have come up through the meeting at the next meeting.
So the, so the provision would include both having the city manager take questions from counsel and having him answer questions from the previous meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Or and me, anything that's come up during the meeting. If a question came, yeah.
Okay, so I'm thinking that that portion of the meeting with him taking the questions from counsel would be toward the end. Would be before the last community matters possibly. Or after that, but then he could answer during the response, the regular response time.
That makes sense.
Okay.
So if we changed it, response to community matters and previous council questions? And then at the end of the meeting, a section added to submit questions to city manager for next meeting? Or maybe it doesn't have to be two sections, maybe the just collect questions and then answer them all for a community and for counselors during the same segment of the meeting. That sounds good, May.
Yep.
Adjust the questions at the end of the meeting and then the response at the same time.
Yeah, because at that point, it's almost like a recap of any questions that have come up throughout the meeting.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then I motion still, okay?
Yep, we're at the vote. So Vice Mayor McGill seconded. Mayor Walker?
Um, yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snook?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That carries five zero. So the only thing I think because they, because the other things I can address for more through email was just what came up earlier during the the reports with the pathway funds to not let that get to zero, which it sounds like it's at. And if we can put some dollars towards that and tell the American Rescue Act and whatever funding we put in there then, so that there won't be a break in, so that families won't have to delay there. So I didn't see. Mr. Boils, do you have any comments there?
Ms. Demick and I were were just texting earlier of getting together first thing tomorrow to make sure of where the balance is and how we can go ahead and try to initiate additional funding so that there is no break in that funding. She and I have had earlier conversations, but not in detail, just that we were getting close to the end of that available funding, but we'll be we'll be talking first thing in the morning regarding that.
Okay, and so could we possibly, if there's an allocation that needs a first reading, could we do that at the Tuesday meeting next week?
That, great idea.
Counselors, are you all?
That's a great idea.
Just just to be clear, the the pathways fund is the is the fund that had historically been about eighty four, eighty four thousand dollars a year, which in the past year, we've increased rather substantially. Is that that's the same fund we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, and how much is in that in that budget line item right now?
I don't think there's any money. I think the last allocation that we put in it was maybe a $400,000 additional resources to help with the increase in community needs.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and they were just one time rather than annual.
Yeah, so we were talking about increasing it annually, but because of the pandemic, it's just trying to figure out how to make sure families are not waiting until we get allocate those additional dollars to the from the American Rescue dollars.
Yeah, I was just trying to remember what what the current status of it is under the current budget.
Yeah.
Yes, I think you're accurate with, oh, go ahead, Ms.
Um, Ms. Demick and I, I want to say the middle to the end of last week, there was a balance of 23,000 is all that was left.
And it had been as high as how much, Mr. Boils, during the course of the year? Do you remember to recall?
I don't know, but I believe someone just said 400,000.
Okay.
I think we actually might have put more.
We did.
We did. We put, I mean, that was one chunk we put towards that, but I want to say we put 800,000 at one point, too. If I recall, early on, we we
Surplus allocation.
We had the surplus allocation. We had CARES money that went to there. We had.
We put about 300,000 even before COVID hit.
Right.
And then I I'm just trying to remember what.
That was from the surplus, I think, dollars.
Right, that was the year-end surplus. That was back in January of of 2020 that we decided that. I just remember what else we had done.
But in the report from United Way, it did say that there was a total of 3.58 million dollars of total pathway funding, of which the county spend was 2.5 and ours was just over one. So is that, those are coming from multiple funding sources that will be on the city.
Yeah, that was also the CACF.
Right.
There was a large collection. I also think it might be important for us to put out there to people that, you know, if you have a chance right now, donating to the CACF or United Way for this to help your fellow community members would be a really, really good thing to do right now. Because there are still a lot of people hurting in this community.
Well, the community has been very responsive throughout the pandemic, too. Even when Emily was given the presentation earlier, even with the PPS and the mask, you know, there was a well-coordinated community initiative during that time. So they have been, you know, assisting. I just think it goes to show how great the need is with the money CACF raised, the dollars. Because that million may be just the money that we've allocated, but I'm not sure with the total. I didn't, you know, wasn't 100% prepared to have that conversation that we have allocated to it. But I just, whatever money we're going to is going to be requested from the American Rescue Funds, I hope that we have enough. If there's not another allocation coming for a year, and when we're having the discussion about the you know, financial outlook and where money could go, that that's a, you know, it's it's going to be one of those things that's going to need to be a top priority.
Mayor, I think one of the things we'll have to be watching closely there, too, is that there will be some money coming directly for rent relief to families, but that will be more restrictive than the funding that we get directly, which was very similar to the CARES funding as well. So we very likely will will need to have two pots of money, just to allow the maximum flexibility.
Okay.
I believe that's what we did before. I know I know Kaki worked really hard with a number of community agencies to make sure that we were making sure everyone went to the the place that they could get the most resources that they needed. And then they leveraged the CARES money quite well, making sure that lots of people, as many people as possible, got the assistance they needed. Because there were a number of people who couldn't qualify for the rental relief. Because there were a number of people who couldn't qualify for the rental relief, for the mortgage relief. Um, and so it was also making sure to utilize the more flexible dollars for people who couldn't qualify for anything on the federal level.
And we also did the housing funds through the Economic Development Office to those four pots. Okay, so we'll have an update and maybe something to consider on the, on Tuesday? Okay, thank you. All right, and I'll just send my other two questions and we'll figure out. Because I think the CHAP, um, and that program, we were, um, we had talked about having a work session on anyway, so that's what I wanted to bring up. So I can send an email to see, um, for that, and then the, um, V C F, we have time during the budget discussion to discuss that, um, further.
And don't we also have a whole work session that we're going to be doing on that?
Yeah, I think so, but I just.
I mean, it may, yeah.
Yeah.
Make sure that it was, that this idea was just floating out there.
Yeah, I started doing some research on it. It's an interesting idea. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Payments to families, um, and what that could look like.
And I would only add, would, would other counselors think for the discussion on CHAP, if it would make sense to include like progressive taxation more broadly? Because I know I've had a few conversations about like what potentially could be done through the General Assembly or get creative to figure out like, um, just to gear our taxes more progressively generally. I don't know if we would want to have a separate discussion just on that or tie it in with CHAP because I just see them very connected.
I agree. It was one of our topics we were hoping to do last year when things kind of shut down. We had actually identified the month we were going to discuss it, so, um, I'm in support of us re-engaging in that.
I am.
Okay, yeah, me too. Okay, so we're going to have the, what direct payments to families could look like, that discussion, and then, uh, schedule a work session with, um, CHAP and, um, other progressive taxation ideas. All right, okay, um, that's it. I think I had one note that I don't have right now and now lost, so any other business from anyone else? All right, um, Mr. Willer, we will, we can open the matters by the public.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. If you're in the audience, you'd like to address council on any topic for up to three minutes, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine. This may be the only opportunity you ever have to speak under Matters by the Public before eight P M. Don Gathers, you're on the City Council. You've got three minutes.
Excuse me, allow me a moment, but this is just outright scary. Uh, I'm not sure how the planets aligned for this to happen, but, uh, anyway, I remembered what, uh, what I was, what I was missing earlier. Um, and that was the question about the, uh, the honorary street signage. Um, and, uh, uh, City Manager Boyle's, uh, report, I just didn't hear, hear any mention of that. And I'd like to know, uh, where we are with, with that and that designation that I asked about at the last council meeting. Thank you all.
Would you like me to go to the next speaker, Mayor Walker?
Yes, please.
Yep, uh, next up is Robin Hoffman, who will be followed by Trina Cooper. Robin, you're on with City Council. Go ahead.
Um, I wanted to add also that, um, Gold Maxine Waters, for her outspoken, um, deliberation on the protest, uh, of the horrible, um, hopefully trial comes out good uh, for the benefit of, um, everybody to follow and stop, uh, you know, killing people aimlessly and that sort of thing. But also I want to say that we in Charlottesville, I was very proud when we came out for Floyd and we, um, you know, Zai Bryant and a whole bunch of people, uh, Don Gathers, everybody, um, organized. We didn't, you know, we were masked, we stood, people didn't even want to go near each other at the time. Um, you know, so I think we can do that again, uh, because I think it's very necessary that, that people, um, get to be with their community and get to, I felt very, I had to come out and I had, and I was so glad that people were out because it means that you care about your community and, um, you know, to show presence. And so I just want to say that if there could be an organized one again, I would, I would love to attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Trina Cooper, and if you'd like to get in line, click the raise hand icon. Trina, you're on the City Council. You've got three minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Katrina Cooper. I am a public housing resident. I live over on Riverside Avenue. I'm, I'm here to speak today. Um, I want to just go off of what the mayor said about, um, shall be coming to an end with theirs. And I feel that, I don't know who I need to talk to, but I feel that the police department need to come and, um, address, um, some situations and how they address situations need to be, um, I don't, I, I don't know how I'm trying to say it, but I, I, it was a, it was last week. I, I said, oh, I stayed two to three hours out here with five police officers, an ambulance and a man that's hallucinating out his mind to find out that, yelling everything. And, and the, the police did not take him. They did not take him. They let him go back in the residence and I felt for my safety and my child, my kid's safety. So I, I, I don't know what the product, protocols is when somebody's off these drugs or whatever, but that night I felt unsafe. I don't know what the police department protocol is for stuff like this, but I know it wasn't for them to let this man go back up into the, in the residence and stay all night with me in fear. And I, I, I would just like for someone to address that with the police department since I can't get through to nobody and I think.
And Ms. Coop, I didn't hear the part, you went out and tell about two, three hours. Did anyone hear that part before the two or three hours?
And I'm going to turn her mic back on.
Okay, can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, you were going in and out and you just, um, you said something before like that maybe you were out for two or three hours with, with the police ambulance or something, and that part just wasn't clear.
Okay, so it was a situation over here where I live that, and I was woken up and I, I, I did stay out here for like two or three hours because the person was out here yelling, screaming, yelling, saying, just out of their mind. And I stayed out here and the officer stayed out here and they let this gentleman yell to the top of his lungs and did not take him away from here. They let him go back in there knowing that he was on some type of drugs. They could see it, I could see it, like, but my whole thing was, it's, it's, it should be some type of protocol that Charlottesville police have because I felt unsafe that morning for somebody to stand out here three hours, two to three hours and just yell and the police stands out here and, and does basically nothing, not even escort them off the premises, let them go back into the residence. I felt unsafe and I just want to see what is the protocol for the Charlottesville Police Department, um, when, when things like this happen, because I know it's not for them, the person, to go back in the residence because they never know what could, what, what could have happened. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other, um.
No other hands, yep.
Ma- Mayor, um, since we're still early, I do have some information for Mr. Gathers, if, if it's okay.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, thank you. Um, I apologize. I, I knew I had a response for this and I, I thought it had been set out and I see now that, that it happened, uh, to Mr. Gathers. But, um, regarding this, the installation standards, in October of twenty twenty, um, due to some issues with the size of the signs and the loadings of those signs on the, the street posts, a, a new policy had been adopted, um, again, October of twenty twenty, um, with a, a new standard that allowed more flexibility and then changed to the different signage that you're seeing now. Um, the locations that were mentioned had been installed prior to October of twenty twenty and therefore they were put on the, the more standard street sign. Um, but all of those coming after that policy had been adopted would fall underneath this new standard. Um, so I know that, that, that's the information regarding the, the sign and the policy, uh, that was changed in twenty twenty. And, um, you know, I, I do remember the, the question, too, of notification and I think that, that got lost during the pandemic, which hopefully we will make sure to do it at any time in the future of whoever requested the signs to be able to coordinate some type of an event around the, the new installations. Um, so I, I hope that helps.
Mr. Boils, do you think it would be possible that we could keep a record going of the various signs that have been put up during the pandemic so that we could, after, once the pandemic restrictions have been lifted, we could look at doing some cer- some, you know, delayed ceremonies, possibly a one-year anniversary ceremony?
Certainly.
I do believe there was another one over, um, off of Grady Avenue. I don't know if there was any sort of ceremony for that. Um, we've had a couple of, a couple of, uh, honorary street signs that we have approved and it would be good if we could, again, since we can't do it during the pandemic so easily, maybe one-year anniversary.
When I first inquired about it, staff was certainly very offering of, of that opportunity, um, at the time of the applicant's choosing, so.
And since we're on signage, I do want to go back to, uh, Ms. Cooper, but, um, I did send the letter from Ms. Carrie and we hadn't moved, um, there was, the last communication was whether we were considering any other, um, or whether there was a policy change and there was a delay in being able to consider. So I think that's what staff was waiting on, um, just direction from us about that.
Mayor Walker, it was my understanding that that whole process is on hold right now. Um, we were going through budget season and the discussion of honorary street designations would be taken up after budget season with staff, um, coming together for a proposal.
I think we discussed the kind of, the starting point of that was some of a lot of the recommendations that came out of the Historic Resources Committee and then also lining on, kind of formalizing that policy.
Yep, so I did send a letter and, uh, the application to Ms. Carrie, but I, I did note that I believe the policy is on hold right now. Um, so we would follow up with her once we figure out the next steps.
Okay. But it's something that's going to be worked, like will, something will come before us at some point in the near future or maybe not so near, but, because I know it was the whether we were going to have it a once a year or twice a year, like that, that part of the discussion will get that, that's what you're talking about working on?
Right, it should be N D S staff, public works staff, um, and I believe Mr. Boils is involved in that.
Okay, all right, thank you. And my only, um, comment without knowing everything that was, um, taking place, and I know that it is probably difficult for anybody involved in a situation that takes hours. Um, but I, you know, the fact that this person didn't end up in jail and, um, you know, is something that I think we've been trying to figure out how to make that happen and for people to get the assistance they need. And so that's, those would be my questions. Um, was there some assistance they, that they needed? Did we help with that? But it sounds like that the, um, officer may have been patient through a process that was unsettling for the individual, probably the officers and to, it sounds like from Ms. Cooper's community, um, community members. And so, you know, I don't have any, I don't know everything that was happening, but I can understand Ms. Cooper's frustration. But I also know that these are the type of situations that we're trying to figure out how people don't end up in jail over. Um, and what does that look like where the individual needs and the community needs are served? Um, they're not harmed, they are not in jail where they can't be helped. Um, and we know that, um, we're not spending the money to house them at a jail when that's probably not their need. Um, but I think this is part of the overall discussion that we, um, are trying to have. Um, and I think maybe Counselor Snook and Vice Mayor McGill, this is more along the lines of what you all are discussing in your, um, working group. But, um, what, what could have been a better response to a situation like this that wasn't the cop taking the individual off to jail, which is the things we're trying to avoid? So this may be a situation that if we can get more information, you all can use as a what-if scenario.
That's, I mean, it, there's so many pieces to this that are kind of, if it's a mental health emergency, the officer has, has very little, like, it's and regretfully, well, from one perspective, it, uh, it's very complicated, regretfully. Um, I wish there was an easy black and white answer to some of this. Um, I know, as many of us know, if it's a mental health emergency, an officer is trying to make the decision if the person is, is a threat to themselves or others. Um, and that's, that's a pretty, it's, it's something that's beyond yelling. Um, even though that can be scary to be around and can cause someone to be very scared. How do we start navigating that? It's, it's hard and we are, Lloyd, if you wanted to speak up, too.
Well, the one thing I wanted to point out, last year around this time, uh, when we began to get a lot of calls for defunding the police or for more mental health responses and so on, there was a call for more de-escalation training. And what Chief Brackney pointed out was that in fact, all of the officers have had de-escalation training. All of the officers have had, uh, some C I T training. This is not a case where we're sending out officers who are oblivious to the psychological issues that are at work. I note that Chief Brackney is, uh, her name is appearing and is on the call. I don't know if, if she would like to add something in particular at this point or whether she'd rather stay out of it. I don't, I don't know, I'll leave it up to her. But I, I personally, I, I look at it as this is an instance of the Charlottesville Police perhaps displaying exactly the kind of restraint that the reformers want them to display.
So they, so thank you. I stepped away briefly to check on the, uh, demonstration that was going on out front that seems to be coming to an end, um, that has been going on since about five o'clock this evening. So as I caught the tail end of it. that seems to be coming to an end, that has been going on since about 5:00 this evening. So as I caught the tail end of it, what I understand is that there may have been someone who wanted a police response or a police outcome that they didn't get the police outcome that they possibly had desired. I don't know enough about it. It does appear, again, that Ms. Cooper, who seems to be the one being discussed, is the one that had her hand raised. And and from everything I say that heard, there might have been a bad connection to it. So we may be better informed if we got a little bit more information from her, and then we could then move to what that might look like. As we talk about much more robustly, what are options for police? And what are their legal obligations as we have these discussions? And Mayor Walker, part of those conversations moving forward is we create systems. You'll hear me say over and over, we may have resources, but we don't have capacity. Or we may have resources and we don't have legislative authority. So we might want to consider what those balances look like when someone is asking for a police response. As a matter of fact, on Thursday, the Senate Judiciary Committee under US Senator Cory Booker is taking up exactly these issues and has asked us to weigh in on it, knowing we are doing a lot of this forward work around these issues. So I think that might benefit us. I do see Ms. Cooper has her hand raised.
Ms. Cooper, I think the best thing would probably be for you to have a conversation with the chief, and I can give you a call, too. And so we can figure out and just let us know if that would be helpful to you for us to call you.
Mayor Walker, did you want me to enable her mic? Ms. Cooper, go ahead.
Okay, that sounds great, because she really did catch it and I mean, yeah, because it's
And actually, I mean, Vice Mayor McGill, do you want to connect with her since you're the working
I'll transfer my number. Would you like for me to give it now?
Um, no, you Yeah, we'll get it. I'll make sure everybody gets it.
I'm happy to organize a meeting with Chief Brackney, if that would work with Ms. Cooper.
If it's beneficial, do we want to just start with a simple phone call, just to set the context versus trying to set up a full-blown meeting? That way, it's often much more responsive, a lot quicker than trying to set up a Zoom. So, Ms. Cooper, if someone will facilitate getting me her number, I can even follow up with a phone call from somebody from our team to 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 assist you.
Okay.
I'm happy to help in any way, connect in any way.
I just, I think this is the type of situation, especially when you're talking about community response. If it's the kind of thing we may see in the community, it's worth talking about and making sure that we are having the discussions during those working groups, task force, whatever they are. And I think that Ms. Thomas, do you have Ms. Cooper's information?
I don't. Mr. Wheeler might be able to get that quicker than I would.
I'll share with you what we have.
All right, any other any other comments? Okay, I feel like I forgot something, but all right. All right, meeting adjourned. Have a good evening.
Good night.